Well, welcome and to December 28, 2022. A board meeting, and if you would stand please with the plate. Jerry, you lead us.
Absolutely.
The United States of America and to the Republic of Canada stands ovation under God in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. First quarter of business this evening is going to be public comment. If there is anyone here that would like to address the board this evening, come to the podium, state your name, address, and we are ready to listen. If no one is going to address the board, then I guess we will move on and we will move to a regular scheduled meeting for this evening. First of all, we have a resolution to approve minutes from the December 14 meeting. We have them in front of you. I believe that they're unchanges necessarily. They had a... Everybody fine with it? I think a motion, please do.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Joe said it's a yellow cord in there that seems loose, but I don't know. I...
Yeah.
You gotta turn on the Wi-Fi, the Wi-Fi switch and then just turn it on.
Yes.
For the approval.
I heard you did all in favor, thank you, sorry.
Motion wasn't made by you.
You have the motion and second?
What was it?
Motion.
Jerry.
Okay.
Second?
Thank you.
Okay. There is no... Opposition to that, so it's motion is approved. Number two, the resolution to approve claims in one. I do not look at them, but...
I do.
Me as well, I have one question.
Yeah, I had one, you just simply answered me.
I was just questioning the short pay on Terry Tree. It's not part of the PO for $636, so we are paying that separately, did it not do the work? It says tree removal, but it says, there's a sticky note that says it's not part of the PO, so we short paid the bill.
Well, I think we asked what to do when they were taking the tree down, if that's what I'm thinking about. And I think they had emergency or 119 here, Colleen, and 135 or so. Over on Pontiac, we had, there was a tree, it was down in the park and they left it out in the yard of the neighbor, so it was a different company. We just said, hey, we put it down in the park, they left it over there, someone with Terry was there, we decided, you're there, can you clean this up? So it was hauling that tree away.
So we gotta pay them, or just we have to set an invoice?
Yeah, I also talked to Danielle and asked me, I know it was over, or we had to just do amended PO or something. Let's see, I don't know why it was short. But, yeah. Let's see, yeah, they were taking it, there it is, on 261 South Avenue, it's right there. That 119 is next to it.
There's 123 London and 37 Holland.
Yep.
Are those threes total 636?
No, the whole bill was a couple thousand plus dollars, and I had said, there's a sticky note that said, tree removal is not part of the PO, so we short paid them $636. But if they did the work, we obviously still owe them the money, or if they didn't.
Yeah, that's the one we're gonna talk about.
Yeah.
But I didn't see that invoice, I only saw the one.
Okay.
That's why Matt, I only saw the short paid one.
Oh, maybe she short paid with the POs and then modified the PO or did a new one.
That's what I thought.
Because I don't see, I don't see another PO number on there. She might be, when I come back from vacation, she might say, hey, we need a PO for this one.
All right. I have another question.
Looked interesting between three trees at 6700 and...
Well, you can.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, for now, thank you.
All right, now I obtain a motion to approve bills.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Trustee Alita, trustee Bucking, trustee Lindsay, mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next item is number three, it's a resolution to set a public hearing to consider the acceptance of dedication from Pride Mark Homes Inc. for Autumn Leaf Trail, Cedar Way Circle, and Autumn Leaf Trails pub for January 11, 2024 at 7:05 PM. I know that there was a notice of public hearing proposed for the same street dedication for tonight, there was going to be a public hearing on that, however, there was a misstatement...
I put cedar wood instead of Cedar Way. Correct, there is a cedar wood somewhere in West Street. Sorry.
Just not here.
Huh?
Just not here.
In town, around the village, and then someone that lives over there called Heather and said, hey, it's Cedar Way, not cedar wood. And he just wanted to make sure that, so in abundance of caution, we said, all right, we'll just re-notice it, since there's not a, you know, a big hurry to accept the dedication.
Okay. So, that is the reason why we are not tonight going to have a public hearing on this, but it is scheduled for our next meeting on January 11.
So you have to take a resolution to set the public hearing for January 11, 2024 at 7:05 PM.
Thanks, John.
So, number three was that, not just notification to the public having a reason why, but a resolution to set that public hearing to accept dedication of the Pride Mark Homes Inc. for Autumn Leaf Trail, Cedar Way Circle, and Autumn Leaf Trails pub for January 11, 2024 at 7:05 PM or as soon thereafter as... Okay, available, right? And a motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Trustee Alita?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay?
Aye.
Trustee Bucking?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on, we have a number four surplus declaration. We have a number of items that are on here, assets to be disposed of via electronics recycling. They are inclusive primarily of computer equipment, batteries, computers, desktops, apps, battery desktop computer, Dell router, laptop, Panasonic, a think center, and another Perlian desktop, and a Dell desktop computer. These are items that are proposed to be disposed of via electronics recycling. Just letting you know that. I believe, would any of those be still viable? Nope, and that's why they are being disposed of, to electronic recycling. We do have...
You need actually take a resolution to declare them as surplus property.
Okay, that was not on, we will do that. The items that have been previously mentioned, the primarily computer software and computer hardware, I would ask for a motion to refer them as surplus, so that they can be disposed.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Trustee Alita?
Aye.
Trustee Bucking?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have notification here, I guess, we don't need a motion on it, or a vote on it, about budget modifications and transfers. General budget...
We do need a vote on this, correct, though?
Do we?
Yes.
Okay.
Because in effect, you're modifying the budget, which requires a vote for the board.
New transfers, yes, more new transfers. All right, so we'll start with the general sewer budget mods, and these are from the last budget of 2022, 2023. And the lists are the AA lists of vehicles, health insurance, unemployment insurance, contingency, lease principalities, interest. There is a... A debit, $128,841, which need to be paid, and that is coming from the credits that you see in front of you of $128,841. So there is a wash, what is being, needs to be paid, is being...
On a different sheet?
What is in the credits, pardon?
I didn't see that number.
What?
Why do you keep referring?
I added that up very quickly as we went through here, the credits, 121, $121,300 and $4,841, that totals to 128,841. And then for sewer treatment, retirement, social security, treatment equipment, depreciation of sewer, and repair and replacement, if you add up the credits, it's $144,671.08, and the debit is $144,671.08. So there is a wash in terms of where the money is coming from and where it's going. That is for the 2022, 23 budget, so I'll take a motion on that to make those transfers.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Bucking?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay?
Aye.
Trustee Alita?
Aye.
Mayor Byers? Motion passes.
Next, we have current budget, these are general and sewer budget modifications for the 23, 24 budget cycle, and again, from the initial AA fund or general fund, is a transfer of $8,100 from workers' comp, seminars, education, facility repairs, to $8,100 total of insurance, computer hardware, and parks and rec and trash. Or is that reversed? I believe that that might be reversed. That would be insurance, workers, to workers' comp, is that correct, Heather?
What was that?
In other words, we're moving from excess insurance to workers' comp? Or are we going the other way?
Says from and to to the left.
Yeah, so it's coming from workers' comp and going to insurance, yeah.
We're taking the $8,100 from those three lines and just moving it to the insurance, computer, and parks, $8,100. And in addition to that, we have sewer from the sewer fund, from, we're taking $37,700, and we are moving it to various items of insurance, computer hardware, fair, college, and town costs, and payments, $37,700. Those are budget mods for the current budget, and I have a motion to...
Jake has a question.
The second one in the general, it says it's taken out of the 5110, which is the CHIPS, or the roads, you know, the general, for seminars and education, and I, do you know, 3620? Oh, is that you, 3620, is that building inspector? I don't know the answer to that. Okay.
The computer hardware?
Yeah. I should've asked about that one, because...
So there is three notes, what that is?
Didn't know it was gonna make it tonight. Can you just hold off until tomorrow, Jake, is that okay?
Yeah, unless you're tomorrow, or...
Okay.
Yes, tomorrow, or...
Which one was it again?
The second one down, the 5110 for 3620, 406.
You don't just know that off the top of your head?
Yeah, 3620 is building inspector, and 5110 is CHIPS.
Okay, so it must be a typo, I'll double check on that, I'll text you later.
So it's definitely just wrong, is what you're saying?
No, I just don't know what it is, I remember, I know there was a discussion on a computer during the budget timeframe, and it wasn't included in this budget. So unless it's the software, it might be the software update from, what you call it, Williamson Mar or something? No, we haven't done anything with them yet, the update that they just did was pretty... Unless they just did it, or something.
So I guess the question, Jake, the question, Jake, then, is why is that line item for computer hardware or whatever, through the building department, $1,500 over budget? That you gotta grab money from another line to make it balance?
Yeah, I kinda, I just wanna know what's coming out of mine.
Well, it is, because all the other ones are, they come out of the same department, so to speak, that's the only one where it's coming from somewhere kind of unrelated.
Yeah, I mean, maybe because building department has really much of a budget.
But the question is, what was the $1,500 spent on? What's it there?
So why don't we take that out, if we have no question on the other three? We can amend, or other two, we can amend that to a total of $6,600 and get an answer for that, and we can...
You can actually just add one little column to the spreadsheet that says what it was, and then this is not such a question anymore. What kind of gold is purchased, right? Why would we move it? I mean, this is just removing money from here to there, but it doesn't say why we're doing it.
Why?
I mean, I'm sure there's a reason, I just don't know.
Yeah, but to your point, it'd be nice to understand the reason sometimes, that we're just shifting money around, you're managing the budget poorly or something. We don't want you to get in trouble.
Yeah, sometimes Marsha would put a little brief explanation just to that.
Yes, that makes sense.
Well, we'll talk to Danielle about that, the one column, but do you wanna do that? Do you wanna leave that out and then put it into the next one? After, she can deal with the reason for that, because it's not correct.
Well, it might be.
It might be correct, so we don't know why, how...
I mean, I would just be forward and see what's left, if we need to.
Right.
Just go ahead and do the budget modification, and we can fix it.
The department head is here, he's not aware, if that makes sense, to hold off.
Well, she just, they are correct, they came from the auditors.
Oh, there's no one too? Yeah, I'm assuming there were some for it, I mean, I'm uncomfortable.
I mean, I get totally understand the question, it's just, I'm not getting it.
No, I'm comfortable, she knows what's going on, and I just didn't know, so I'm like, hey, what's that?
Whatever you feel comfortable doing, it's fine.
If it was out, she came from the auditors, then we will leave it in. So do I have a motion to approve the general and sewer fund budget modifications for 23, 24?
Let me just somewhere on wait.
You can wait, that's fine.
All right.
All of it across the board, or just can be approved except for that one?
I mean, either way, but we just, unless we miss something, we just do separate ways.
They can be done anytime, it's okay, we can do it.
All right. Aye.
And... We will table that until next time, January 11.
Yeah, just don't see my look, we're saying, I'm sure.
I would make notification to all that this is approaching new year, and on January 2, 2024, the HSA funding for employees will be renewed, and there will be a new year of funding for them, so we can do that. I would like to, at this particular time, mention to all of you, and that will include comments from Don and from Jake, in a meeting that we recently had with Bella Associates and with Matt, and the team, in discussion, it was put forth that the wastewater treatment plant improvement project has come over budget. The original project cost was, is an estimate, $10,900,000. That was done in the summer of 2020, we approved that. And there has, since then, been an increase in costs, there was a cost in terms of construction from 7.6 million to 11 million plus in that time, was projected, as well as additional costs. So they are proposing, for what we approved back in 2020, a $3.7 million estimated increase for 2024 construction, and so that would take this project from the 10.9 that we originally approved, the cost for in terms of sewer project, to 14.5. 14.6. Don or Jake, you wanna add to this?
Well, basically, the bulk of the increase are two things. First of all, inflation, and as most of you realize, the last two years, inflation has been much higher than in the past, so, and in fact, for the last, since the summer of 2020, the overall increase just by inflation is 18%. So if you take 18% of the original construction cost estimate, that's almost $2 million bucks right there, that was caused by prices going up. Then the other big thing was when the DPC required a redundant trickling filter. Originally, the project was only gonna have one new trickling filter, but they wanted two, so in case one failed, whatever, you had a backup. So the, that's an additional 4.4 million right there, is the extra trickling filter, that's the big one. But that was, you know, you couldn't say no, it's part of the speed's purpose, that you gotta have redundancy to it. So the upshot is, you know, the original bond resolution is for 10.9 million, it's gotta be... I guess what the Bella people wanted to know is if there was a consensus, you don't take it all, that as long as you guys understand there's gonna be, you can't stick with the 10.9, or the money's gotta come from somewhere, and you still have the, they're hopeful that EFC will make up the difference, and by increasing the loan, the 0% loan, interest free loan, will make up the 3 point some million dollar difference. But they, the first step is to amend the bond resolution. They don't wanna do that until bids are open, because the bids might come back lower than 14.6 million, and then, so you, and the timeline that they sent was to advertise for bids on January 11, and open the bids on February 8. So what this board could do in its January 25 meeting is just adopt a resolution for a public hearing on amending the bond resolution. Although... I'm not sure if in that, for the public hearing, I think we gotta have a number though, so I don't know if that's gonna work, because they wanted to wait till after opening the bids to amend the resolution.
Yeah, I've got, I'm scheduled February 25.
Next gentleman's on the hearing, who's that?
Yeah, I'm going back with, oh, I forgot, just sent this out from, from... Jan was there? I don't remember.
This isn't...
Oh, she's gonna have to change that. In any event, in any event, they just wanted to make sure that there's, you know, a majority of the board is okay, is gonna be okay with borrowing the additional money. Because if you aren't, there's no sense. The only alternative is to cut things out of the project, and really, there is nothing that can be cut out.
Which that was something that Matt Higgins, I spoke to him right before the meeting, he wanted me to point out, or if you guys could explain, that it wouldn't be over $4 million in increases, however, with you guys took out septicage, and there were a couple other things that were less impossible, he wanted me to make sure that that was pointed out. So it's really not four, it's more like the three, because of other things costing less and taking out septicage.
Like that, I'm saying, there's not a lot of, it's not like there's fluff in there, we're not doing a brand new office or break room that's got, you know, all these, so anything that's in this project is things that we're gonna have to do, and this is a great illustration, this 2019, when they updated, or when they got these costs together, and just in that short period of time, the difference, they're gonna have to...
Jake, those annual costs per EDU, is that to our customer, because...
Down here.
Because then they'll repay more than that now, so it's been...
Oh, that's the, that's the capital cost, you know, the...
Curry.
Yeah, here's the operation and maintenance.
Probably don't know what this is gonna do to the...
We have them together, in ours, we have just one charge per EDU. This kind of breaks it down, this is saying, hey, here's what the capital charge is gonna be, and the operation and maintenance, obviously, that stays pretty close to the minor increase, and with the cost of everything going up, you know, if there's small increases every year on the operation and maintenance part of it, then that's just for the capital.
Okay, I mean, I thought that was the, that's really weird, because what is it now, 120 or something?
225.
225, like that?
Yeah. And the projection that we have, and what you guys were given, was giving 300 somewhere around 2020, which the pound's already up right now, you know?
So what they said, if you have, the sheet Daryl painted out, that's got his little notes on there, that $63.37 annual cost per EDU, that is, that is the annual cost of paying back the interest free loan, which ultimately is bonded, but that doesn't include the increase, that's based on, you know, so I asked that, and they estimate us an extra 18 bucks per EDU with the extra $3 to $4 million, whatever it turns out to be. So you take it, and that would have to start being paid back in 20... in 20, the 2025, 2026 budget. So if you take the 225, assuming you can keep that at 225, but Jake just said, well, maintenance is going, so that might go up to, I don't know, 235. You know, you might have to add something. But then you have another, what, 63 and 18 on top of that. Which, I guess the good, the good news is, is probably still gonna be less than what the town charges. The town right now is charging $299 for residential, for E D U for residential. And that doesn't include the $81 million bond cost for their Phase 2, which hasn't.
And there's no, and there's good, obviously, potential for additional grant monies or no?
No.
No?
No. Well, the, no, there's, the potential is for additional loan, interest-free loan from E F C. No, because it's all the same project. So you can't get a grant just because of inflation. You have to apply for.
Well, if you're adding something new to the second, I just didn't, I didn't support a new.
No, they don't consider that, they don't consider that a new grantable kind of project.
And the trickling filter was because, you know, their original thought was to put another trickling filter, as Gon said, next to our existing one. Our existing one's 125-foot trickling filter. They were talking about putting a 60, there's a 50, there's different things that they went back and forth, but it's between about 55 and 65 foot next to it. If you do that, the trickling filter has to have bugs growing on the media that have to get fed. So to switch between, you know, if you're running the 125 footer and all of a sudden switching over to the 65 footer, and then you're going back, there's, there's problems. So they found it was, you know, it was a lot better operationally to have the same size trickling filters. So construct a new one, take down the old one, and construct another new one, you know, in the footprint of the old one. So they would operate better, and then you can get, you know, split flow, and then one of them would be big enough if we had to take one down. And then they, you know, they split the flow on there each, always ready to go. Because there's a, there's a time period for growing that biomass on the, on the media so that it can clean the wastewater. Thank you.
So the notes that I had, they went from the 10.9 to 14.5 million for the recent cost. But if you then add in the 1.7, I guess it was somewhere near 1.517, a grant that we got, that took it down to the 13. And you see the estimated project cost with the grants. And then the annual cost reduced by grants went from 95, which was the, excuse me, $45, which was the original. At 10.5 or 10.7, it went into 63, 67 with the additional pre-aid. So that 63.37 would be the annual E D U cost of the. So that's why it goes from 14.5 down to 14.5. But the reason why it goes from 10, you know, 10.7, 10.9 up to 14 was because of, then the inflation and the addition had to be part of everything. Well, this was to let you know that we have greater discussions. We have options from tonight. If you look at it, if you think the questions known, get answers to them. And I think that stuff in general, it's going to be something that, due to the nature of. And it's still, I think, is a great gift for constituents in terms of the cost per year.
So it looks like then.
January 11th?
No, no. Well, that's gonna be to advertise for the bids, and then the bids would be open February 8th. And then at the first meeting in February of this board, February 13th, you can adopt the resolution for the public hearing on the amended, on the amended bank. Because then we'll, we'll know what the number is that has to go into the notice. So the public knows it's going from A to B, from the 10.6 or 9, 10.9 to whatever. So, and then they have to adjust the numbers going out. Basically, basically, it's, they should be able to award the bids sometime in May.
They were looking to do that, I think, by May 9th, something like that.
Well, yeah.
Or close to that, maybe 6th, 7th or something.
If the rest of the timeline works.
Yeah, I'm just double checking my emails, because man, this is.
Well, yeah, she can do this. Yeah, she just messed this one. Because then, even if we take it on the 13th, they can still submit the notice a couple of days later, right to payroll.
Let's just make sure we can start with this one for the advertise, because the D E C, Matt had an email this morning about the D E C. With them trying to get a meeting scheduled, because they haven't finalized everything yet.
That's you and Bella. I was just looking at what this board is.
So, yeah.
I didn't read the timeline.
So it should be, it should be, they should be able to, the only thing. You got this, from the B P D, I forget her name, Tanya, was it Tanya?
Tammy.
Tammy?
Tammy Bullis?
Tammy.
Tammy, you know, and the only one she's got wrong, I think, is the Village Board made it the 25th to adopt the resolution for the public hearing on the amended bank. That's gotta be after the 8th, so we can do it on February 13th. Which still, everything else then, for a public hearing on March 14th, which is plenty of time to get the notice out and highlight something. So they would still get to February 9th to actually award the bids. And make everybody start June, July, autumn.
That was a tight timeline to the, to get started this point and be out, and running this somewhere. Okay, so the next, I believe, January. All right, we will move now to code and fortune. Sir, what do you have for us?
Well. I even hugged him.
Yeah. We're gonna ignore that photo in the background. Call number, applaud. We had 14 permits, nine C of certificate of compliances, three C M Os. I think there was actually a mistake typo on your complaints violations. I think it was 13, I actually only had seven. Legal, Court for Dunningham, it was supposed to be tomorrow. Don and I just got notified that it was moved to February 23rd now. For his attorney, apparently he has COVID, so they had to change it. Still no change to the property. And I don't anticipate that would have changed between yesterday and tomorrow with the trial. The neighbor, just to note, the neighbor's house has been for sale for many, many months, and they have not been able to sell it. So, I mean. Yeah. Miscellaneous stuff for the, no updates on the Rogers McDonald's. They've completely stopped work over there. They're not even attempting anything right now. Due to no power still.
What are their, what's their reasoning?
Our genie's just not.
Has anyone asked you to look? Nobody used to work.
I have also called our genie myself to find out. I haven't even gotten any calls back.
Doesn't sound right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand that at all.
I mean, I know, I know for a fact that our genie's having, you know, issues all over the place. Greenbrier, they were having such problems with them. They went to the media, and it was all over the news, and then miraculously, our genie showed up the next day to do their work. Even me personally, I've been waiting for our genie for two years to set a pole and transformer for my project, and I'm still waiting.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what they did down, right down in the village. And wrapped them.
Oh, that was fun.
And they had cones all across there. I know that there was a little fray in the wire, but all of a sudden, they're gone.
Well, yeah, and nobody has explained anything. And I know I had to call Jake because the poor waste management driver, they got hooked on him because they've been hanging so low. And they put a red flag on him, what, three, four weeks ago? And then this poor guy in the waste, he had no idea what happened.
No.
So I went out because they saw it. And so then I called Jake to at least get the firemen over there, because I didn't know if the, they got the one pole down by Main Street straightened back up again, because, I mean, it was really. But they haven't done anything about getting the wires back up. So I'm waiting for the next waste management truck to drive through there and save them out. But I've been hearing that about our genie a lot.
Yeah. As I said, they've completely stopped work over there, unfortunately. Same thing with Donovan Flush Park, not our genie related, but they've stopped work for the, for the winter months, but they're going back in the spring. Greenbriers continuing their work as planned. Everything's going well over there. There's a few Z V A cases coming up. One will be a special meeting on January 23rd for a possible large-scale project. That'll be advertised in the coming weeks for, weeks for that. Then, I got some letters in the, I got a letter in the mail. Somebody's going to great lengths to impersonate me, apparently. They've sent a letter to us, sent it to the village of Webster. It's postmarked from the owner of the property of Park Ave. It mailed out of Rochester. They, you guys all have a, you all have a copy. They, they tried to, you know, making their own village of Webster letterhead. Stating, you know, what they stated, and they did at least.
I know.
Put the right code reference in there. But I want to put, you know, on record that this did not come from the village of Webster. And just to note that, besides that, the email is for the town of Webster. It's not even for my village email. So, I mean, there's obviously a lot wrong with this. But I just want to make it known to the public that if they get any letters and they second-guess it, to please, you know, call up the village hall or should.
Did you speak to Josh Jones about this letter?
I've actually called the town several, oh, I'm sorry, the owner of the house, yes. I was actually at his house today. And he actually has not received a copy of this letter. But it says that he is the one that sent it to us.
Well, I see that on the envelope. Obviously, he didn't, why would he do that?
No, right, right.
So he didn't send it, but is there really an unregistered vehicle that's sitting in his front yard or?
No, no, he, and he even told me today, he goes, yeah, I park on the street sometimes. He said, along with a lot of other people. He said, I'm hard-driven daily, so.
So that wasn't you in the bunny suit?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's not illegal to park overnight.
Yeah.
Right, right. So, you know, again.
You talked to Josh and said?
Yeah, yeah.
He knows this didn't come from the.
And I, and I did advise him that if somebody shows up at his house on January 10th, like they state they're going to, make sure they get the information, call on Ford, they call me. And we'll get over there right away, so.
Well, it's actually, it's actually a crime to impersonate an official.
Yeah.
You know, it's, I don't know, it's a felony, might be a felony.
It is, it's a felony.
Yeah. I guess they just got acres, it's almost just supposed to be their turn to grow some like that around Spaz.
The whole thing.
Yeah, there's a.
Something going in there, or he just wants?
Right now, there's, yeah, right now, there's nothing. They're just gutting it, getting it back up to, car opening it up a little bit more. He's got some potential clients that want to go in there, but nothing, nothing that he's ready to announce right now or for change of use in force. Hopefully, they'll go soon, because it's a good location.
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I, I think so too, but he did, he did say he's not gonna do the expansion that he planned on originally. He may change his mind in the future, but as of right now, we're just remodeling the inside. Go get somebody in there. As soon as I hear, I'll make sure, obviously, the permit will be in for a change of use, so. Although at that time. Any other question?
The special zoning board meeting on the 23rd is, is gonna be jointly with the town's planning board.
Yes.
And it's gonna be in this room. It's related to the Tessie potential leasing of building 200 and a couple of the buildings. So building 334, half of that building's in the village, half's in the town. The two big main parking lot that they want to use is in the town, so they need approvals from both the town and the village. In order to expedite things, it was agreed that we'd hold joint planning board, town planning board, village zoning board, so that the applicant Tessie doesn't have to show up to two different boards and basically give them the same presentation.
And we will be lead agency?
Well, the bulk of, you know, 95% of the project is in the village.
What's the date then?
January 23rd, 7:00 PM. And you have a copy of the, I'll leave it, and that's, that would be for. The town's process for site plan review is a little different than the village. They have three stages, sketch plan review, the preliminary site plan approval, the final site plan approval. The village just has preliminary and final, no sketch plan. So, but this meeting will be for to satisfy the sketch plan review for the town. And it's basically just for discussion with the village to bounce, in case, you know, any zoning board members have any issues that jump out at them. They can let, you know, the owner know, and they can address them. But they're, it's not for any approvals.
But just discussion.
All right, Don?
I kind of joined in and.
Everything.
So, maybe nothing's ever been there.
How about the front office?
Just one thing. Our deputy clerk is retiring, and her last day is the 3rd, but technically, her last day is tomorrow. So definitely, I'm gonna stop by tomorrow and say goodbye.
I would like to also publicly thank Jo for all the work. She, her and I worked close, obviously, doing the Z V A stuff, the building stuff. She was kind of my, right hand, left arm at times, to help me with everything. She's just a wealth of knowledge, so on. I don't care if she's listening, I want to tell everybody that is. And I appreciated her, and I wish her happy retirement with it. Pretty good work.
Yeah, she's a good person.
Yep.
All the way around, not just the back.
Heard it in June of 2015. Eight, eight and a half years. Done a lot of scanning job. Yes, sir, but we have a new deputy in train, and we're moving forward to 13 years. We're doing our first meeting in January. First meeting, January. All right, well, we, this is the end here of our meeting. Our next meeting will be Thursday, January eleventh at seven o'clock, and we're forward to.
Sorry, Jake. I thought he wasn't coming, so I took him on, I'm cutthroat.
Well, he was gonna bill the village time and a half for the presentation. I was just gonna thank the guys, they're doing a great job keeping the snow ice off their own.
They have, they have. Got a little bit of flooding there.
And, no, they, you know, when it's raining, it's going around the country, and something, they always, a great job by the lead collection.
Trees, what was the trees, yeah, collection, next, two weeks from now, maybe?
Fresh, it'll be the first full week of the month, so.
I'd look at the.
January.
Yes, the, that next, like, eighth, week of the eighth, because the first one's on a full week.
So, good. Those people may, have to take them down, if they're allergies and.
Yeah, they always smell great when they're drying out the Christmas tree, too.
Oh, yes.
They're pulling into the shop.
Oh, yes.
All right, well, we thank you for watching, and can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, and happy New Year.